Meeting called to order. Roll call.
Dr. Ross, here. Mr. Webb.
Here.
Dr. Hug, here. Ms. Ware, here. Mr. Davis.
Here. On behalf of the President, adoption of a gentleman. Anything need be changed at this time? And not can be adopted?
Can I move or adopt every day that I can?
Second.
It's been moved and second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero. Perfect comment?
None.
None? Recognitions and presentations, five point one.
Mr. James, members of the board, I have not spoken to Miss Frasier King this week, but you do have a copy of her presentation here. What Miss Frasier King is interested in doing is using one of our locations. She originally spoke about Frasier, using one of our locations to serve as a community center in partnership with Pretty Girls with Blains that is facilitated by Big Bell, former educator, retired educator. They're interested in leasing that particular property in order to provide space for other community partners to hold training, trainings, community events, and so forth. And so that's the base of her request.
Who would sign the contract? And would it be Southwest Wellness Association?
And Pretty Girls with Blains.
Oh, both of them, do you think?
Yes, yes.
Do y'all want further discussion?
And I think that would be, it needs for further discussion.
Yeah, we would need to discuss it further.
Talk to her.
Talk to her first, yeah.
Well, we'd all have to see the contract, right?
In light, and she did not present a contract, but it was just a starting point to have a discussion. She's been here once before. Now she's put a little more structure to her request.
Right, I saw that.
Also would need further discussions in light of, you know, our recent incident at that location. So if the board gives the approval, I will continue those discussions with Miss Frasier King.
Okay.
You have, we have approved it. We can't further discussion.
Okay.
Second.
And we wouldn't say no in favor. Okay, all right. Item six, approve of August fifteenth to twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Approve of August seventeen, twenty twenty-three board retreat minutes. Approve of August eighteen, twenty twenty-three board retreat minutes. And approve of September seventh, twenty twenty-three special call meeting. Do you intend to get approval for all the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero. Prove a concern now. Anything that concern out, that you see that need to be moved to action now. If not, can I get approved?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero, action now. Eight point one, Frasier King.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, Mrs. McDonald-Bream. On behalf of the interim superintendent, the Office of Community Resources is presenting the personnel report for today, dated September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. The report you have before you all, if you all have any questions in regard to that request.
I have a couple of questions, but I need to ask them in executive session.
You want to move it? Eight point four?
We'll have to.
Yeah.
Okay, that's moving.
I saw move, we move this to item executive session.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and second all in favor?
Aye.
It passes five zero. Okay, eight point two.
All right, good. Good afternoon, members of the board, superintendent. We have a four year out eight point two, which is the approval of claims documents and acceptance of financial reports. Within your binders were part of claim document filed dated August the eleventh, August twenty-fifth. Additionally, the August twenty twenty-three financial reports and capital project sums are attached. I want to pause first and see if there were any questions related to the included documents before. Recommendation.
I don't have any questions, but I was gonna say, Dan, you remember what I would question that I asked you? Have you converted?
Yes, sir.
You could, so he can deal with it while you're not replied?
We discussed about the quarterly reports. It tells you the percentage of each department's budget that has been.
Yeah, right, that's the.
So that's something that we'll work on to have available for you next month.
So, so there are no problems?
No, no problem at all.
So you can ease it out? I'm just.
But no, we, we, yeah, no, no problem at all. And I may be, maybe even, may even be able to just remove some of the other reports that's captured in there. Because we're dealing with expenditure budgets and that's certain.
The move we get that, you want something plain and kind of.
We're asking you to be a graphic artist.
Yeah.
I believe we have, I believe the system has a good report for you.
If we have, as well, specific later in detail, we can get that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
What their budget are, what they spent, and what they're reminding about, yes, sir.
Sure. All right, I'll make sure that happens.
I move that we approve the claims documents and accept the financial documents as presented.
Second, second.
It's been moved and second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero. Eight point three. All right, this, I got nothing else once more. This item relates to the approval of workers' compensation insurance. Our current workers' compensation insurance policy expires the end of this month. So included in the package is the proposal from Stevens and Hobby Insurance for our insurance carrier, which is moving. The good news is, I'm sure you're able to see, that's a twenty-three thousand dollar savings year over year of this renewal.
You say there's a saving?
Yes, sir.
It's not going up?
It's, it's a, it's a reduction. Workers' comp, our risk factor went down, and that.
I'm, yo, that's what's been played. You feel you calculated that, right?
Hey, this came from the man himself. It was the Tate Hodge.
I, I never.
What is the risk calculation based on?
Based on our accident reports.
Our accident?
Yes, and payroll amounts.
And so we met with Mr. Hobby in the spring. He gave us some strategies that we need to implement to decrease the number of accidents that we pay. One of those things was, there's no change with the props and so forth. So those are the types of things that we implemented to make certain that we fight and be prepared.
Oh, we have that in common, yeah. The uniform itself, yeah. No, I mean, that's, that's basically what, what actually affects the risk. But he knows what those triggers are.
So he doesn't know specifics, but you know, he is able to see the clients that come through. And so just give us some practical, practical strategies that we can implement.
Well, okay.
So, so you recommend we approve it?
Yeah, and I'm just gonna add that, like, like you just said, that he made a visit, we had a presentation, strategy, talking about really what happened, what we can do. We're gonna plan on doing that again and have very positive.
Well, I'm gonna tell his mom.
We're gonna do that again.
She'll do a good job.
If he keeps saying a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Again, I will tell his mom.
But that is, that's the point, that's all I want to say. We recommend that the board, trustee, approve the renewal policies in my speed.
We're gonna be hosting, but we're not gonna be out of the music for about a few years.
Well.
This is.
We're gonna one day.
Insurance. Mine is never going down.
Well, that move that we approve.
Right away. A second.
It's been moved and second all in favor? Aye, all five zero. Eight point four.
Mr. James, members of the board, you have the four units opposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school facility rental fee schedule. You return and just look at that. You will see a couple of areas where there are some increases, but of course that's due to the cost of utilities going up and supervision and having those facilities cleaned and those sorts of things. So it is the interim superintendent's recommendation that the board approve the school facility rental fee schedule.
Let me, I have the thing. I'm, I'm looking for it now. And before we act on it, I'd like to, I'd like to give it out. Because it's my understanding we have different fees for different people?
For different people?
Different events?
No, sir. Universal fees for each facility.
You have different fees for locations? So if you're.
Well, I don't know what we, okay.
It's in your.
Right, I just got my book I'm looking for. Because I couldn't see, I couldn't find it, it's on my phone. But in any case, can we just table that until I can?
Oh, yes.
I probably, because I wanna make sure that, I just, I'd just like to see what the fee schedule is.
Oh, yeah, so we just go with the same things until we meet again?
Right, and that, because somebody called me about rental facility and I didn't know that we were charging fifty dollars an hour or something like that for certain activities or.
You always have a rental fee schedule that we use in the cases where community partners have come before the board and request, you know, but they not have to pay the fee, that's what we done. But there's always, always, always some fees.
So we waived some fees?
Yeah.
And I waived others?
Yeah.
And that's what I wanted to see.
In the cases of where people use our facilities and they are making a profit, it has been our practice to go with the fee schedule.
Right, and I, and I understand that. But I was also wanting to look at it myself, see, and make sure, because I would imagine there may be some waivers for somebody maybe doing something from an educational perspective.
So they say, well, like, the forums.
So they have to be qualified, that's, that's the kind of thing I'd like to browse myself to see. That's what I'm talking about.
So that's not a part of the fee schedule to do. But what the board does as waiving, that's our part of that schedule for those who are required.
But I think every, every time someone uses a facility, it comes to us, right?
Right.
And that's when we decide what we want to read it.
Right.
Well, well, I.
Normally, we don't.
We don't.
Normally, normally, we just, I don't remember us saying a lot of times, okay? All we do is approve them using the facility.
We wait.
Mr. Butcher waived the fee for, for educational event. Mr. Butcher did it. So I don't remember it coming to the board for us. Now, we can, we approve it, but I don't remember we.
Like the guy using the tractor.
I think we waived it.
But in any way, you just wanna see.
I just don't remember anybody coming to the board, and maybe one or two, but any and everybody coming to the board and, and we specifically approved their request and waived it and specifically articulated that we waived the fee unless they asked for it.
Well, the way they normally did it, Philip, it was in your, on your agenda when somebody wanted to rent something. And we went on and approved it at that point. If somebody wanted to use the gym or this or that. But as far as the wavering, we never, not to my knowledge either, I never, never did either. He just approved.
I, I remember us saying something where he said, you know, when it's a good cause. I, I, that, I have that recollection that we said, and, but it was, I don't even know that we vote. We voted to approve they use it.
Exactly.
And then Mr. Butcher made that decision.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, see, he waived it.
I just wanna make sure that we're consistent when, when.
And who we waived.
And who we waived and who we're not. And we don't need to have one situation where somebody has been waived or another situation where somebody who may deserve it, I think they should be waived, be waived. So that's why I want to see.
Okay, well, the only, the only thing that I present to you today are the, you know, the fees for each facility, that's, that's it. What that number is.
Okay.
And maybe he waived it when somebody he thought was good cause and they couldn't pay.
So typically, the facilities, the piece that we've had in the past that I'm aware of, is we have community athletic organizations like the, the football leagues for the small kids. They use facilities, there's not gonna be associated because they be into our athletic program. We've had organizations who come in, we've had educational forums, we not charge fees. So that's typically what we've seen. But if you have something, as Mr. Phil said, people who are coming in to use the facility for other purposes that are not typically educational related, then they have been associated.
Such as these playing lots.
There have been extremes, that has been extremely limited. We've used those facilities for events that have, um, added to our program. Let's say that someone comes in and they wanna do a family reunion. Then there has been a fee for charge with that. Or some organization wants to come in, they want to host a program in one of the auditoriums and there, I believe there is a fee that has been charged. But to use that for political forum or for educational forum or teen summit and so forth, there has not been a fee associated with that.
And in regards to a town hall meeting, the fee was waived. And that's dinner with the family, to defeat with that way.
So what do you want?
I, I wanna look at, still look at it, I understand what you're saying. For instance, there was a group that used athletic fields, a large group that came from out of town, but used, I assume they, they enjoyed it.
But they made, they, they made a donation to our athletic program. So in lieu of that field, they offered to make a, a, a contribution to our athletic program.
So basically, we just talking about this fee that you need improved, not waiver anything at this point, just to get this fee because everything is going up?
Yes.
Just to get an approval of this fee? So I move.
Hold up, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna look at it, have a chance to look at it.
This is what it is.
We want to pay.
That's what prove it, when you looking at it and then you say.
I'm glad it's a move, when you looking at it, and then you call back.
I would like to have the opportunity to look at it before we act, take action. That's all I'm saying. And I just need to look at it, I know that I'd rather look at it.
Well, that's like, here it is.
I, I can't look at it now.
You wanna read it and tell?
I wanna look at it because I wanna make sure I understand exactly what everybody's saying. But you have to understand what I'm saying. I'm saying we, we need to have a consistent policy as relates to using our facilities, okay? Because I was under the impression that the only real requirement we've ever had, and, and that's my shortcoming, was you got to have liability insurance.
Aye.
Okay, we always talk about you got to have liability insurance. But in terms of charging the insurance or not charging that, I never, you know, I just haven't been up on it, okay?
Is that policy?
I move on the favor of it.
But when we gonna pick it back up?
We pick it back up today, I'm just saying.
You get it, they don't, okay?
Yeah, I just need a chance to look at it. And I don't expect to see anything glaring, but I would like.
The main thing is you wanted it to go up, is that right?
There, and there are just a couple.
Just a couple of them that went up.
So you, you, you would agree?
Yeah. And so they chose it, yeah.
So, so, so we table it and then you look at it and you just move back?
Yeah, I just, I, I'll have a few.
We're moving the text.
It's been moved and second all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
There's one or six.
Okay.
Big numbers.
Eight point five.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm sitting today for Miss Philip Butler, in her absence. I'm presenting eight point five, the approval of federal programs consulted. The federal program consultant will provide the guidance to the federal program director to ensure and count compliance with the federal program allocations. This support will assist with overseeing all federal areas related to the funding. Federal programs support, the consultants will also assist the new federal program director to ensure the compliance of various title programs. The federal program consultant will support the new federal program director until June the thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. Superintendent recommendations, recommend that this superintendent, oh, sorry. Recommend that the board approves the consult of Monica Anderson. Anderson being this consultant, L L C.
So what you have here is the board approved for a consultant, a consultant to come in to work with Esser Funds. But what we also found, she's also provided support to our new federal program director with federal funds, just our normal Title I of our federal allocations. And so in order for her to provide those services, we have to have, show that the board approved for her to provide the services just for that portion.
So she, she's, she'll be doing two jobs?
Yes. So she's still dealing with federal funds, but in order for her to be paid for her services with Esser, that we had to have one that shows Esser. But for her to provide support for just the, the regular federal funds allocation, we had to show something separate. So that's what that is. So she's still doing the same job, but she's providing additional support with those federal funds.
What you, when you say doing the same job, you say she's already doing two jobs?
She was doing Esser funds previously. So now she's providing support to Mrs. Butler with those federal funds. Yes.
But she's getting more separate money for each one, right?
Yes.
Okay, and that was not happening previously, right?
Yes, so when the, if we are auditing, we have to be able to say she provided this number of hours just to Esser, she provided this number of hours just to federal funds.
Okay, so, so I would like this move to the legislation too, because I have to.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I'll, I'll promote that we would respond to it after we've laid out twenty-four of course to be asking in that position. How, that we table it.
Table. Second.
It's been moved and second all in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Okay, we are, eight point six.
Eight point six, Mr. James, members of the board, is a recommendation for the approval of the twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four Suicide Intervention Manual. And so each year, we take a look at that manual to make certain that it outlines the process that we use when we have children who try to commit self-harm or there is a suicide attempt. So that manual outlines our steps, our procedures that we use and also provides in there information about community resources that are available in the forms. And so it's the recommendation that the board approves this Suicide Intervention Manual.
Who put this manual together?
This manual is compiled, worked on by our counselors and by members of the district team. So actually, not the King, one of our employees is the person, our former contact for suicide interventions. But because of leave, she's not able to be here today.
The association coming from, oh, the administration?
Yes. No, this was revised by counselors and then, you know, provide, so we allow them to take the lead because they're the first line of contact in the school system.
Right, that's what I mean.
But we're gonna use it to educate?
Yes.
The rest of?
Yes.
The system?
Yes.
So I move that we approve the Suicide Intervention Manual.
It's been moved and second all in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. This is the thing.
I think we should get to me.
I hope it ain't like. I mean, if he ain't suicide, he called in and said. He made suicide and tell you, hang up and call. One, eight, one, two, three. Like you remember that. If you think I'm lying, call it, I'll give you all your numbers, check it out yourself.
So you have here, you have your mental health crisis response.
Take it, you'll call. Maybe they've been following you, yeah, I don't know. But anyways, okay, we got eight point eight.
Mr. James, will you all please remove eight point eight? Because I, I don't have that manual. And that was my help.
Okay.
Is that the dropout prevention?
Yes, I didn't provide it to you all.
That's eight point seven?
Eight point two, eight point eight?
Eight point seven.
Okay, we need to say?
Yes, I'll bring it back to the board.
Okay. Eight point eight. Did you do?
We have more friends.
We're ten, did you?
I'm presenting again, eight point eight, the approval of Hope King Teaching Resources. I see professional development for Cathedral. Hope Teaching Resources, Hope in Wade King are dynamic, personal, white, dual professional about the world of education. We have found a tremendous success of students and variety of background by creating and driving to support and encourage strong academic improvement and achievement. It's two, it's two hours in person, a key topic workshop with Hope and Wade King. Administrative consultant, the staff will be taught, I'm sorry. Therefore, the ways to establish and maintain classroom and positive impact of teaching and learning. The training is designed to support and, and, uh, of high quality.
Did you know all about some why you so nervous?
They would be looking.
Yeah.
The administrative, the administrative staff will be taught the effective ways to establish and maintain classroom and positive impact in teaching and learning. The training was designed to support, to support and, and give invitation of high quality and equity.
Practice for all students.
Practice for all students.
You get it?
It's a recommendation, it's the interim superintendent's recommendation that next time water supply can afford more.
So we gonna table it?
Mr. James, members of the board, may we table eight point eight?
You may ammo through all that.
The best one. I wanna get some understanding.
I wanna know what you.
She's pretty.
This is, this is a technical.
She's supportive.
And it's for Cathedral, you know, this.
It's for.
Yes, so we'll please table it and we'll have the discussion.
Okay. Yeah, when you hit that ammo, you need. It's not.
Eight point nine, I'm gonna help.
Well, we have eight point eight, we gotta table eight point eight.
Table it, table it, please.
I, I saw who we table it, item number eight point eight.
It's been moved and second all in.
Aye.
Five zero, okay, eight point nine, just a.
Eight point nine is a recommendation for the board to approve for us to submit out for the proposals for our projects for the elementary schools. We know that we're under time constraint at this point. And so it's a request that we, it's the recommendation that the board approves for our project, the architect to advertise for bids for the, for the project.
So what other project?
This is the rent of bathroom renovation.
I say it again.
We started on the bathrooms at Morgantown and McLaughlin, right? But then we gotta come back and do the, all the air conditioning.
The H P A C has already, you've already approved that to go out. They, they wanted to put it out as one page. And so this is for the bathroom renovation. Approved for us to send out for bid for the bathroom renovations.
And, and this one?
Yes.
So it's on the page.
We had an option to accept them.
Yes, sir.
All of them.
Yes, sir.
This is to send out the.
Yes.
Under that, we. Oh, you need six, so for a second.
It's been moved and second all in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. So this goes out to be a win?
We'll talk with our project manager on tomorrow. And I think we have to advertise for thirty days?
Even gonna have to start it?
Yes.
It's gonna be doing before September? All right. Eight point ten.
Eight point ten, and so it, it, it's no addition, addition to that. Eight point ten is just a request for a policy code change. The board approved policy G B A V dash B that dealt with salary incentives. So for those high, high needs areas. So if, as you remember, the auditor notated that we can't put signing bonuses in our language. And this particular policy code says teach some sound bonuses. And so when we talk with N S B A, they could not remove that language but gave us a number, another policy code. So we're not changing the, we're not, you're not changing anything, the incentive, you're just changing the code name from G B A dash B to G B R E A that just says salary incentive, that's all.
That makes sense. I meant that we accept the change, okay.
It's been moved and second all in favor? Aye, passes five zero. Eight point eleven?
Not this one, but I would say.
Okay.
Move it table. Move we table?
Right, you fan next to him.
Okay, good thing, members of the board, Ms. McDonald Green, agenda item eight point eleven is a request to enter into agreement with Head Start. It's the same annual agreement that we enter into every year. And by entering to this agreement, it allows us to work collaboratively with those uh teachers and uh help test those students and provide services for those students. Uh, it is the recommendation of the interim superintendent that the N A S D Board of Trustees approved it to leverage the agreement between N A S D and Mac Head Start for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year.
So move.
And moving seven all in favor? And pass five zero, okay, eight point twelve.
Eight point twelve, Mr. James, members of the board, uh we were approached by uh the local representative for the John Ford Center in order to.
Who is that?
Chantel Chantel Marsa, um to use one of our locations uh as their central office. And so we made with Ms. Marsa, and she's interested in using the office that is right across from uh Harrison Thompson's office uh to use that room that's appointed, that would be the central location. Uh, she serves children, uh uh I'm sorry, she serves young adults in our community who may have not uh completed high school. Um, this is an option for them, so it works well into our drop off intervention plan uh uh plan to have this partnership with community. So when we have children who are just not making the progress in the general education setting, then we have options for those students. And so they're interested in leasing that facility, um you have, here is a draft lease uh for that particular room, and it also indicates um the amount, the Bruce, the amount here.
How much?
Where is?
Two hundred and, I think it's two hundred and eighty five dollars.
Just for one room?
Yes, sir. And what we did, we went by square footage, using the guy that we use for Harrison Thompson, based on the square footage of that room. That's how that that uh I was arrived uh at, I spoke with uh Ms. Marsa, and she said that that was on the green old mountain.
Okay, and uh we usually the two years.
It's up here by. It is.
I believe that we approve of this week's agreement, so.
Moving seven all in favor? Pass five zero, now, you're still. They don't know they're gonna be letting them take them out in there.
What?
Letting them take you out of there, make you. That's your school though.
School. Well, I'm gonna bring that up.
You filling that school up, you got plans for that, they gonna.
No, I got, I talked to board, they have plans for that.
That are indicated in section three.
Okay, alright. So at that, now we in administration report. Thirty day review.
None at this time.
Thirty days, the child administration. Ms. Fields, oh, will you?
Good evening. Uh, Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald Green, um item number nine point two is uh the Child Administration Department asking for the board to review the updated school wellness policies of the school National Security Division. It is recommended that the board review the updated school wellness policy for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year in question. Um.
Wait, we don't have to.
No, that's for just. She'll bring it back.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is good. You're me in the cafeteria, right? I can bring my own sauce and stuff, right? I'm just here.
Well, they don't.
You're adult, so you can bring whatever you want.
Okay.
You just shouldn't bring me hot sauce.
Oh, you think sauce or salt?
Salt, salt in it.
So you gonna break the rule.
No, no, I have, I cannot do that.
Okay. That knocks me out.
Else the report, else the report.
Ms. Butler, uh was away at training on today, but do you have your updated report in your?
Yeah, I'm gonna get to come back. Okay, nine point four is our. Our board ca- uh calendar, anything we wanna add, you board, you don't wanna add to it, add to it, take away. Nine forty board calendar, that's our calendar.
We don't need to add to them.
No, no, it's just. Okay, and I have uh, it's yours.
Uh, there though, uh Larry updates, as you all aware, we did have an incident this morning at uh McLauren uh with a bomb that was called into nine one one dispatch. Uh, we'd like to commend uh Ms. Martin and her staff, Ms. Martin was actually in the building working uh when she got the call that she was surrounded by law enforcement. But I would say that that staff performed uh very well under such stressful and chaotic uh conditions, uh as I told Mr. James, they was chaotic but orderly at the same time. So uh the threat came in approximately about seven fifteen, seven oh five. Uh, by nine o'clock, all students had been returned to McLauren, they had been transported to our relocation site. Uh, they had been provided uh breakfast, and they had been returned to their school by nine o'clock, very orderly. Uh, as I said, uh as Dr. wants you walk, it was a very good drill.
Good drill, drill check.
So we appreciate. We appreciate that staff for the work that they uh they conducted. Uh, our team has been working very hard, uh but we have been working very diligently, we are pleased at the progress that we're seeing, especially with um the the behavior among students. Uh, Mrs. Reynolds is here, our principal at the high school, we are commending Mrs. Reynolds and her staff for the culture that she is establishing at Manchester High School, it is a world of difference. Our children are orderly, they're uh excited about being in school. She is the mother he-man, I assure you that, we attended the her first pep rally at the high school, uh it reminded you of our high school.
No, don't tell me that.
And so we were very pleased at that behavior.
Was that round?
So we're excited to see the work uh that she is doing there along with her staff. Also would like to commend Mrs. um Reynolds, Mr. Moore, uh Mrs. Angela James, who is our career coach uh at the high school. We had a very productive meeting on two weeks ago, days kind of blurred together. We are looking to establish a partnership with Colleen to open our evening welding program. And so we are excited about the opportunity that children will be able to graduate high school with as certified welders, and you all know welders make good money. So we are just excited about that opportunity, and we're gonna continue those conversations and hopefully be able to bring to the board soon our request for us to enter into that agreement with Colleen. I think that's all that we have, uh Mr. Davis has been doing quite a bit of work. We're gonna have to talk about.
He needed to stay here for exactly.
Yes, sir, something that we're gonna need to talk about as a board as we go forward to uh try to change some patterns that we've seen here.
Okay, and this time we have the board number two, uh Ms. Dr. Robinson, anything you want?
Here, bud, stay safe.
Yes, I have something I'd like to uh bring to the and ask for the board to approve. You know, uh just give a little background for Juan and for everybody really except myself and Amy. About seven years ago, uh we we never other board members, we just started talking about school of performing arts. And we had anticipated and thought it was thrown out to us at that particular time that we would use the Washington School. And we knew that we could only do such a thing because of the condition of whatever, if that if there was enough financial uh availability from the district. And then we had the COVID and the building of the new school. Okay, uh a year or so after that, maybe even before that. And then once the new school got built, uh the projected situation was that we would have a lot of vacant buildings because we building another school and so forth and what we're doing. So then it shifted to what Mr. James brought up, the possibility of having the school of performing arts at the what used to be freshman academy, that's what he's talking about. Uh, and we haven't really moved far, but I did some preliminary uh investigation. Uh, I know at our last meeting, it was indicated that we knew of one, and that was the one in Brookhaven. Uh, well, actually, they've got one in Tupelo, and they've got one in Germantown. Okay, this is, which is in Madison County, okay? And so I was gonna ask the board to, uh, but we need a little help on this one, and I think we need all hands on deck and all for us to see if in fact we can come up with the school of performing arts and what it entails and so forth, and whether or not freshman academy is the right approach or some other approach would be better. Uh, which is why, part of the reason why I have not thought, but I wanted to get authorization from the board that any and all board members and any and all staff would be available to if they incur expenses by traveling to any of these areas, and I don't intend to travel to to all of them, okay? I'm hoping that uh we can work it with Dr. Morrison, Morrison and Mr. Fields and Zamba to get as much information as we can sent to us, but if we need to go and view something, that that we would have the the authorization to do that with our expenses being reimbursed. Y'all, y'all get what I'm asking?
Right.
Okay, and so I'm saying, uh, uh, I just want want to put that as part of the record, so if we decide to to collectively, uh, one person or all five or whatever, uh because I'm thinking the closest one would be Germantown, they just uh open theirs, okay? But it's it's a school, and I think you said they spent forty one million dollars on it. So I'm going back to what you said when we talked about it, it's gonna cost a lot of money to do something that needs. So that's why, but we at the same time, the reason I've been trying to keep up with the S R fund to see if we would have monies available to retrofit, that what you call it, something like that, the freshman academy, it could be on a in a much lower scale than what what these other places have, but Tupelo has it, has his uh his his school of performing arts, it's separately built, just like it is in Germantown. Uh, and that and and the same thing would happen would be would exist in Brookhaven, but that's one I want to offer motion.
Brookhaven is is the statewide.
The state put it up.
Yeah, it's it's it's. It is the statewide and and, you know, these others are a part of their system, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, Tommy, that's a big difference in the funding.
Right.
But but there's no reason why we can't start small.
Right.
Work on something, have something that's the beginning of this performance, and we all agree that we want that.
Yeah, I think, right, everybody agrees.
Oh, yeah, that was one of, that's been one of our stated goals since I've been on the board.
Correct, because uh the record has shown uh historically that you have kids involved in these kinds of uh musical activities, whatever kinds of activity that they just fail, they appear to do better academically.
Well, I know you've all heard me go on and on and say this. But I've never understood why people saw education in any other way, you're educate, you're educating children whenever they're doing anything, when they're reading, when they're reading poetry, when they're learning music, the brain is developing. We now know with neuroscience that the brain development is where wherever they are and with lots of activities, and certainly arts and music are one of the key to developing the brain. And so that needs to be.
Drumming, all all those kinds of things.
Absolutely, and I'm not saying sports aren't one either.
I didn't say that thing.
But those those neurons, those brain neurons.
What makes you think?
Sports good.
Anyway.
Just like.
So anyway, I I I confer one hundred percent. Uh, I want us to move forward as much as we can and devote as many.
It's gonna take a lot of teamwork to get this done, is what I'm saying. And so that's why I wanted to have him for the board to authorize uh normal kinds of expenses for reimbursement or whatever should, you know, somebody to travel somewhere to do something or whatever the case can be, normal kind of in relationship to this particular project, because we gotta investigate and see what others are doing, and then we may not be able to do it on a grand scale like that, but we should be able to do something and make a determination as to whether the idea of freshman academy being used or not, because it could be possible that freshman academy, there's a gym in the freshman academy, is that correct, Davis?
It is small, it's small.
I know, but I'm just saying it's bigger than what we have. We don't have a, do we have a band room at the new school?
At the high school?
Okay, 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 and I'm and I've been trying to figure out, and this is just my thought, uh because we will have five, seven million dollars, whether we could do some extension to help accommodate something that next year if we, the freshman academy won't go, what you see, I don't know. But but architects and engineers and all these people can give us the information and show us what what will be more feasible.
And also what I'm, I think is equally important is the facility would be looking at how they staffed it.
Right, that's correct.
And that's our other big cost.
Exactly, and we need to know where they get those staff from. Their concentration of kind, so I was gonna offer motion that we would, that uh, that, you know what I said, repeat? I'm offering motion that we would be, that the board would authorize expenditures related to this particular effort uh be uh approved before I act.
Good afternoon, Mr. Ford. My name is Tom Berg, and I. But uh I was interested in, I was with the board about leasing a uh parking spot at the Washington old Colleen school, a truck park, and a truck parking lot. And I was, I talked to the same, I talked to Mr. Larry, just the board, and I was directed to come here and just see what kind of, see what I did go to about trying to get that property leased.
Y'all remember, you've been a.
How much property, some of the leasing, just a park or the owner property or or?
Just a soft end of parking lot, or soft end of the parking, the big parking area. There's trucks parked over there now, but I was, I think there's abandoned trucks there, and I was gonna get all that moved out. And uh put security like the cameras, keep the property maintained.
Have we talked, have we talked with Bruce, Mr. James, about?
The best thing you gonna do is to give y'all and Mr. and Tony, y'all work it out.
Can you write a proposal and give it?
Well, he, yeah, he can give us, yeah, he can give him Mr. Fields right there, and then him and Miss, work with him and Miss McDonald and him. And uh they'll get you, they'll they'll work in the right direction.
Okay, man. We gonna need a lease because we need to be able to determine whether he's talking about him leasing a certain amount of property and nobody else can park there versus him parking his truck there, and others still parking in that particular area.
Sorry, about five trucks, I would like to park there and.
You got five trucks?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you got, you got all the trucks.
And uh I got scattered everywhere, I like to get one, one.
Okay, he got them, yeah, there where else he wanna get them? We have done that before, but I just think that that you need, you need a guy knowing the right way.
Yeah, we need to do that, Mr. uh Ford, but but Bruce is gonna need to track the drugs. Description of which area he's talking about. Okay. And and I don't think it's gonna be expensive, you, because we not use.
Like it, it's just the use of parking, parking on it, no lottery, no language, no anything, like just truck parking on it.
Okay, and do you know how, which part, what size of the property you looking?
Uh, Mr. Larry, he's supposed to be, uh, he's supposed to be measuring that from the building to the street. I think he got, he already had that measured, I had to get back with him.
Okay.
I think he measures, you know, everything.
Okay. Okay, we need to do that and ask Bruce to write the description.
I think when you do it, I'll just uh ask him to make a proposal to the board so we can work off of that.
Okay.
So I'll even just need to get with Mr. Fields, kind of direct him, I'll have to.
Make that proposal.
Do we need, do we, do we need a motion?
Do we need, do we, do we need a motion today?
You just need to do it and.
Yeah, and just bring it back to the board.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. James, members of the board, all, I mentioned last week, we before, back, we have two surveys, and we had a lot of students who are interested in distributing these surveys on campus, and so we requested the board to leave them, and so we wanted to know their questions or intentions that they have, or do we have permission to proceed with those.
These are for just educational research.
Educational research, they apply, they apply, blind surveys, so, identification, identification, ability of our students or staff.
I didn't, I didn't see any, I didn't see anything that was, but, you know, I just.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't seen, but I'm gonna trust you all.
Well, and the only thing I would just say is, you know, don't burden our teachers to take away from.
No, we're, we're only allowed to get off you, if you had, I know twenty people, we're not allowed outside, so we want to.
I got it, I got it. I do too, I've, I've got, have a million of them, but I, I just know sometimes when I ask teachers, cause they're.
All right, so shall we go? Y'all didn't finish, just.
Oh, I was so sorry.
Go ahead. Cause I got finished.
Oh, Lord.
It's a matter of, for real.
I have, no comment.
Philip just took out my man.
Well, I've already responded to Philip, so go ahead.
Saturday is High School Day at Allpoint State University, and we're gonna thank you all for, for getting our students registered to attend this fabulous event, we'll have over twenty-five hundred, hundred students from around the state, Tennessee, Louisiana, and of course Mississippi, and even a couple of students from California flying down for High School Day. And we are excited to have our very own Natchez High Cheerleaders to entertain us during the game, we'll be on the sideline along with the Brave Cheerleaders, and we will have guests in the president's box, I'm not gonna call it a name, cause I don't want nobody with, that's an AME with a Baptist finger going up, but we wanna thank y'all, come on out and just have a good time, go brave.
We have to thank Dr. Cook and the women for helping us with this connection, so our children are excited.
We are bridging this, is by any means necessary.
So what you gotta do?
So we have to.
You gotta do get impressed by patient.
You gotta be the superintendent.
Well, you wanted me to make a motion, we, we send them permission for the students to go to Allpoint.
Don't do it.
You're awkward, I know.
We appreciate it.
Oh, and we will halftime.
We got some leverage too.
Halftime activities, the Braves basketball team, two-time SWAC champions, they will be receiving their rings at halftime. Basketball, dance basketball, they will be receiving their rings at, I'll be your spokesperson, come out and hear the voice.
Put something. All right, is that, thank you.
You have been fixing.
Uh, we're mostly, may have a close determination.
Close determination, thank you all for coming out.
Dr. Morrison.